I call to order the Waverly City Council for April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Those with no becomes our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the March twenty-eighth and April fourth minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Those with no approved minutes. At this time, the city is very proud to receive the Ida Energy Office Certificate of Achievement for our city energy management program successes. And don't think we have to do anything special on that, just acknowledge it because we want to say, thank you very much.
There you go.
Wow. That's why I look to the city administrators. You may say some words if you would like.
I'm just here as a representative of Iowa Economic Development Authority just to say, you know, we really appreciate the city of Waverly's willingness to put forward such a great committee to work with the regional energy manager, put together a real comprehensive energy action plan, as well as some sustainability goals and things that I think are really going to help the city move forward in their sustainability and energy efficiency efforts. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, and we do take it very serious. We've had many discussions on the importance not only of being efficient, but also of helping lead and to be part of the team effort throughout the state. This is not small. This is major for us.
I agree. It's very, very considerable. Congratulations.
Going to your office or mine, James?
Well, I'll spill it out.
Okay, that's all right. Our guest councilperson for April is James Perry. After one meeting, you're almost a veteran, right?
Something like that.
Any comments on being guest councilperson thus far, or anything you'd like to say?
Not too much so far. It's an interesting process, so I enjoy being here.
City government is an interesting process, and if anything in America is wholesome, it is this: the citizens getting together to lead the town. So thank you for being with us.
Absolutely.
This time, I would entertain any comments by the public or the chamber on the items on tonight's agenda. Travis Tolliver, the head of our chamber.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members of city council, city staff, and citizens of Waverly, both here in person and at home. As the mayor said, I'm Travis Tolliver. I'm the executive director for the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Program. I am joined by representatives of the Waverly Downtown Development Group, LLC, Rich and Ann Segerman, who along with other downtown building owners have initiated the renovations of underutilized upper story space in five buildings, resulting in the creation and addition of eighteen new living units within Waverly's downtown housing market. Right now, barring any unforeseen factors, these units are due to come online sometime in the month of June. Last Tuesday, April twelfth, the chamber received the notification and details of temporary construction affecting the zero and one hundred blocks of East Bremer Avenue from engineer John Beederman of Fur Graham, a civil engineering and environmental planning firm hired by the LLC to oversee this portion of the renovations project. City staff, council, and business owners in the affected areas received an email from the chamber dated four thirteen, and many businesses, business owners were visited in person by Paul Stevenson, LLC manager, with a letter, both of which explained the water service portion of this project as we received it from Mr. Beederman. Details of traffic rerouting, along with parking and pedestrian traffic in front of affected blocks and businesses along East Bremer Avenue were spelled out, all in accordance with the information the chamber and LLC received from Mr. Beederman. As of this morning, when blockades went up and construction began, it was evident that the details of which had been explained to us were not accurate. As a result, Fur Graham has issued this letter addressed to me dated today to respond to the situation. I'm going to pass out copies here to the council. And so that's entered into public record. I would like to read it out loud for you now. Dear Travis, it has come to my understanding that information I previously provided regarding traffic rerouting in the downtown business district of the city of Waverly was completely incorrect. The purpose of the project outlined describing how traffic would be affected was to help business owners understand what to expect. In that regard, I completely failed. I have no excuse. I was going from memory on plans we created and had and approved by Iowa Department of Transportation staff last fall. Obviously, my memory is not as good as I think. The approved traffic control plan was for no parking being allowed in the zero, one hundred, and two hundred blocks of East Bremer Avenue during the course of construction. The project to construct upgraded water services to ninety-eight, one oh four, one twelve, and one eighteen East Bremer Avenue will be constructed in phases as these addresses are on the southerly side of Bremer Avenue, and the water main of which we need to connect to is on the northerly side of Bremer Avenue. Initially, work will take place on half of the street with all traffic routed to the other half. Upon completion of the first half, traffic will be shifted and the construction completed. The contractor has indicated this work will go into June. Unfortunately, I cannot give a more accurate completion date as progress is dependent upon conditions encountered and weather. However, we plan to keep, we plan on keeping everyone updated as progress is made. This includes adequate notice of water shutdown to make the service line connection to the main. As further project background, we investigated multiple options of providing an adequate water supply to these buildings. This included directional boring and other methods, which were not as obtrusive to traffic on Bremer Avenue, everyone's preference. Upon our investigation and initial bidding, it was found these options were not feasible. At that time, it was decided to proceed with the current method and received approval of the traffic control plan. We will be working with the contractor to minimize pedestrian disruption along the sidewalks as much as possible. This will likely involve temporary surfacing until the final concrete and pavers can be restored. As a building owner on Main Street in my community, and having been involved with downtown reconstruction projects, I fully understand the need to have access to the front door. Given the nature of the project connecting underground to the front of the building, there will be some disruption, but it can be minimized, everyone's goal. I fully apologize for the inaccurate information I provided and hope we can all work together moving forward for a successful project. The city of Waverly has a wonderful downtown that you all can be proud of. The upgrades to these buildings will just add to that. I look forward to our communications as we move forward. Please share my apologies with the affected downtown business owners. I am more than willing to attend a future meeting to discuss the project further. Thank you for your understanding. Sincerely, John Beederman.
You may be.
I would like to now invite Rich Segerman to address the council on behalf of the LLC group.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us share this update and information. Again, my name is Rich Segerman. I'm just a representative of the building owners, and we certainly apologize in regards to the inconvenience this has caused and the miscommunication that's happened. Again, as Travis has already indicated, this is really information that we received that was incorrect from the engineer. But we will do everything we can now, at this point, forward to make sure we have proper communications, updates as we receive them, and we will certainly work with the engineer and the construction firm to get this job completed as quickly as possible. Just an FYI, this, the work that is being done here is specifically so that we can have sprinkler systems throughout all the buildings in regards to addressing that safety concern. So again, we apologize, but we know this is an inconvenience for everyone, for the citizens of Waverly, anybody driving through, for the downtown owner, business owners, as well as folks that are going to those businesses, and we'll try to get that done as quickly as possible. We do think, though, that, you know, this, hopefully it's going to be a short-term inconvenience, and we think that the long-term impact of having these eighteen new units will certainly overshadow any of that short-term inconvenience. Happy to take any questions.
I have a question. They seem to close off the walkways, let's say, on First Street southeast, coming towards City Hall, First Street north, or south, northeast. Why, after they leave at the end of the day, can't pedestrians, is there no hope to have anybody walk across the street? So if we're going to go visit our in-laws, we go down three blocks across the street, three blocks over, plus there's no, my brother-in-law just had a hip replacement, and you have to park in front. This could be getting right across from the theater, across the street, but you can't park, so.
Yeah, that's correct. So parking is temporarily closed in front of those blocks due to the construct, the impending construction. As far as crosswalks and sidewalks, that's certainly something we can address with the firm. As of right now, we're trusting that the plans that were submitted and approved are, is what's being done right now.
These are state engineers, correct, involved with setting all this?
Correct. I think Fur Graham is a state, is it civil? I'm sorry, they're a private civil engineering firm that was hired by the LLC.
Is ever adjustments, are adjustments ever possible?
I believe so, possibly.
If we needed it? I don't know.
I don't.
As a town reaches for wisdom, and if it comes to City Hall or whatever, and suggestions, I would assume it'd be difficult, but just in case, I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can, you know, take a look at some reasonable questions with regards to rerouting of some different plans and see if the firm can make those adjustments.
I guess a couple of questions. First, I'm a little bit confused. Maybe if you could, I don't know, maybe somebody's probably better equipped to maybe draw a map of downtown and see what was supposed to happen and what happened and why we're getting an apology letter, so the people understand. I guess as I went downtown tonight, it looked like most of downtown was kind of closed off, and maybe that's not to be the case. Can you maybe help us understand maybe what happened?
Sure. I believe if you look at Mr. Beederman's letter, in the first paragraph, he talks about having relayed the information to the chamber and the LLC purely through memory of the approved plans, which were inaccurate. So the plans that were submitted are what's being taking place right now. The verbal communication that was relayed to the chamber and the LLC for communication with business owners and the city was not accurate because of that verbal communication.
There was a map up on the city website, I think, at one point with the original plan, but I don't recall it in detail.
Can you help me understand what's the issue?
As far as?
Dave wants to know why, what are you apologizing for?
Oh, okay. Well, Dave.
I'm helping you out, Dave.
The letter goes fast, and people are probably wondering what was it supposed to be?
We communicated to business owners, to you and the city staff, that parking on the other side of the street where the construction zone was going to be, was going to be open. That rerouted traffic would just take in the two lanes on the other side of the street. That was not the case. Barriers went up on the other side, past the double-barred lines, so in turn, parking area actually became another traffic lane. And so that's what we're apologizing for, because that communication was given out to business owners in the assumption that they would have parking there, along with the additional two hundred block, which is now closed off as well according to the approved plan.
Sounds like maybe kind of what the mayor's saying is, let's look for a way to fix it.
We're doing our best right now to work with them to see how we can fix that. And we're also looking into ways, too, to try to fix the pedestrian traffic along the sidewalks with some temporary routes for them to be able to take to still access storefronts.
I imagine businesses, I'd have to look and see, businesses might have income impacted or something, I guess. We should probably assess that.
Possibly.
But it's not four weeks, it's up into June?
Correct. June is the slated completion date of the entire project, both north and south.
Have you heard from businesses today already by chance?
Yes.
Okay.
And have they been polite?
Yes.
It could be a real concern for them.
Absolutely. And that's why we're here today to address this, and hopefully, we are going to recommunicate out to them, but because it just all happened today, certainly wanted to bring it in front of you, first and foremost, into the public via the television, so.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, the apology, but in many cases, that's not enough. I guess we would probably look for, to be fixed.
And we're currently working on that. Just wanted to bring it forward to your attention. We want to be as transparent as possible because you have been so supportive of the project.
I know I have had a conversation with a couple of affected ones on the east side and used it as an opportunity to encourage them to come to the study session next Monday night on reconstruction of Highway Three, so that they can give their input into things like this for the next project, so that hopefully we have less hiccups with it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But this is a state effort. This isn't a city effort. When we get to the reconstruction, we're going to be all participating in that, one at a whole different intensity and a whole different process, so.
Correct.
Public, let be known that.
Correct.
Next summer will be thought through.
This current project is a private endeavor, but with the help of state-granted funding. And then the study session next week will certainly be the state effort.
And for the public one more time, we couldn't wait on this one a year until we get to the other project, because we cannot open up these lofts until we have the required sprinkler systems, and therefore, we're going to take care of it.
That is correct.
Put it up, put it back together, and then take it apart next summer.
It is unfortunate timing, given the rebuild next year, but the building owners can't wait to open these lofts.
No, we understand that.
Yep.
Okay.
And I also think that the grant won't allow us to extend beyond that deadline as well. Also, just to clarify, too, in regards to, you know, fixing it, if you will, what we're really trying to do here is fix the original communication that went out, and now trying to follow up with the correct communication that should have went out. But the Department of Transportation was the one that really kind of helped design and approve the path and everything, so I'm not sure in regards to, Dave, you're fixing it, I'm not sure what there is that we can fix. We certainly can go back and to the engineering firm and the construction firm and ask, you know, ask for some, hey, are there ways at which we can open up more sidewalks or more areas and things like that? But I guess what we're here tonight really is to fix the communication piece, and I'm not sure, if the communication would have went out correctly, this is what it would have looked like. I mean, the work that's actually being done today.
But the construction itself is open to some discussion, is question whether you can still solve it because you're dealing with engineers in the state. However, I mean, just eyeballing it from my perspective, I could make all kinds of suggestions. How do you get this pedestrian across the street? Why can't we, people leave at night, they don't work all night, so you can have a daytime pattern and evening pattern, it seems to me.
Certainly, and we will challenge them and ask them those types of questions, but I guess I just wanted to clarify that the fix, what we're here tonight really is to try to address the miscommunication. And then we certainly can follow up and try to see if there's other things that can be done, but.
Right.
But we don't want to.
But I'm not building up hopes. I do know that dealing with the state and these projects is not our effort, but.
Right.
Where they're going to benefit long-term, David, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, I'm done.
I was going to say, this was just kind of a touchy, you know, and everybody was very supportive, this was kind of a touchy time, especially since Bremer Avenue was closed, and we should, you know, that's already being detoured and so forth, so, you know, we kind of need to work together with the business owners. Otherwise, I mean, people could have said, well, no, we can't do it, and we can do it maybe in August or something, and that would have been bad, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both, yes. Other public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda? We have seven items on tonight's consent calendar. They are two WH CAS bills, one for the Sixteenth Street Southwest Street work, we have one for the dry-run work. Design Alliance has a bill for the Public Service Center. We have two liquor licenses, one to Walmart, one to Wooden Foot. We have the March cash disbursements to approve, and we have a liquor license for Janesville Tap, which is for a catering event. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
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 Those with no. Consent calendar is approved, regular business item number one. Is a contract for continued consulting services for energy efficiency efforts? City administrator, comments on this one?
Yes, sir. In the last year, the city's been working with consultant, and of course, made that presentation to you earlier, about some energy efficiency projects that can help the city may have kind of a smaller footprint when it comes to energy usage, from changing over light bulbs to LEDs, and there's a lot of items that are similar in that nature, some small, some larger. This would be a continuation of that contract for one more year. As a lot of those items have been completed, we're now able to start to monitor the reduction in usage and to see if we can continue forward with more projects that will continue to shrink down the utilities that are needed to operate multiple buildings for the city. And so that is the request, is to continue forward with the project, to employ the consultant for one more year on an as-needed basis, and then to try to identify the savings that have occurred, and then, and basically take it a year at a time, and see if the benefit is truly there. But I know there's a long list for the second year of additional projects, from LED replacement to some more efficient motor replacements, to just a variety of things. Most of the paybacks have been within three years, so they've covered the costs and then started to reap the benefit. A lot of them are less than a year. So that's kind of, I guess, what's before the council.
Okay. Let's discuss under, after a motion. Motion, please.
I would move Resolution sixteen twenty-seven approving the continuation of energy efficiency consultants' services from Franklin Engineering Services LLC for an estimate of fifteen hours per month, including travel, at a cost of ninety dollars per hour, plus not to exceed one hundred dollars of other expenses for the city engine, energy management program.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Council discussion.
How long was the previous contract that we had with him?
I believe it's just for the one-year term. There was a grant that helped provide funding for that. We're going to try to go after another grant this year as well to assist in that. There's a possibility, I believe, it's not a great one, but we're still going to try to get the additional funding for it. But we do have money budgeted this year for these type of replacements, and partially for that service as well in our capital improvement plan.
I guess I'd like to see us encouraged to go ahead and continue this. I think Christine has been invaluable to the group, the knowledge that she brought to the process, the contacts that she had, and just the modeling that she was able to do to help us identify the projects that had a reasonable payback, and she helped us look at maybe some of the things we could do at the library, fire station, something as simple as using an additive to the pool water to greatly reduce the cost of heating, those type of things. I think there's just a need for some of that expertise to keep the staff on track and moving forward, so.
What's the long-term plan? I mean, will we just decide this on a year, on an annual basis, whether we want to hire a consultant or not, or are we planning to always keep them on as needed, so to speak, or, I mean, what's the bigger picture plan?
I guess my perspective would be to get a second year so we can measure the effects of the first year, and if it truly is not panning out the way that we thought it would, then we would probably discontinue the project. Still looking for those efficiencies of similar-style projects, but maybe not the full use of the consultant to do so. But I'd at least like the second year to occur as we kind of finish out the second half of what was identified already, and then be able to at least measure our usage throughout and see if we can't have a full reduction in total utility need throughout all the buildings and say, yes.
Do we have an estimate of how much we might use them in the coming year, how much it will cost?
I know the figure of about ninety dollars per hour, for up to fifteen dollars, fifteen hours a month, would be factored in, and if that was the case, worst possible scenario would be fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars for the consultant. And a lot of these savings are in multi-thousands for some of these similar projects. Some pay for themselves in a year, some two or three, and then some go quite a bit further out. We're focusing on the smaller gains that are a year, two years, and we already start to recoup the benefits going forward. And a lot of it is just the reduction in energy usage, especially electrical, when it comes to you switching out light bulbs, simple things like that, but they still need to be done. And then motor drives and various things that are not extremely expensive, but that do all add up to a large reduction in usage per thermal, so I hope that it would continue to be progressive for the city to do this and to offset some of the costs we're having. Eventually, it may be a budgetary element where you can start to reduce the total cost of your utilities, which would be the ultimate goal, so.
I think some of the concepts, we're already making sure we build into new building projects, so LED lighting, those type of things have already been put into the new emergency center, those type of things. And I think we're leveraging what we're learning on retrofits, on new projects, and those type of things.
So, James, do you anticipate that what would happen in the second year would be more of the same, or do we have some things that we didn't get to in the first year that need to be addressed now?
A little of both. I think there's some additional phases, because some of this does take a bit of time, and you're changing out some of the LED items. There's some motor drives being looked at, which are a little higher dollar, but yet they recoup the cost in a year. And again, I think Christine could probably answer some of these questions, but I'm sure better than I can, but that is the hope, is we have a very long list of projects that could occur to offset some of the costs, so that's to anticipate it.
I know one of the things we're still taking a pretty hard look at is, if you look at the fire station, when we did that, we did geothermal, and we did then when gas prices were high, but electrical prices were low, but now we've got the reverse, and Christine helped us through a study there to validate that it's still a very efficient system, it's just probably not the most cost-efficient system at this point. So we're looking at maybe putting radiant heat in, so depending on where utility costs are, we could do one or the other, and try to get the true out-of-pocket cost down versus, and balancing efficiencies and all of those type of things.
Yeah, that was one of the more kind of out-of-the-box thinking that we did in that group that was really interesting to find out. Electric heat in Iowa isn't as cheap as it was being touted to be, because natural gas prices have leveled out, and actually, natural gas heat is cheaper right now. That could change in two, three, four years, it could flip back over again, which it'd be nice to have that versatility that Dan was talking about, to be able to go either way, so. Any specific questions about projects, or?
To me, this sounds like another really good tool in our toolbox, ways to manage costs. Some of those coming out within our expertise specifically. I think the assistance in getting rebates, whether it's from Mid-America or even our local utilities, helps a lot as well, because there are a lot of incentives out there to make things more energy efficient, and that helps to offset some of the costs and some of the capital as well when we go forward. So we have a certain amount budgeted, and we'll try to stay within, obviously, and then hopefully the savings can then help compound that and get additional done as you go forward, but we'll make sure we're very conservative in how we approach it, so we're not overextending within the fiscal year, so.
Wonder if this would be something, something interesting we can put on the economic development, or maybe that's not the place to put it, or someplace just all the projects that we've done, and like Dan's talking about, the fire station projects or different projects that we've done, and some of the results, it's always good, best practices are good to drag about.
It's a great idea.
Very much.
Any other questions? Christine, more discussion? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Resnick.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Resolution 16 dash 27 unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to set a public hearing for the next phase of the golf course pond project. This has had around one discussion, let's go directly to a motion.
I'll move approval to set the public hearing date to review the plans and specifications for the golf course pond project for June 6, 2016 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second and council discussion. Public input, roll call vote, please. Voice vote, all in favor, signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no. I was carried, I was coached on that one before, and I still ask for the roll call. Regular business item number three is to approve contract for our 2016 street repair on approximately 100 city blocks. Let's go directly to a motion.
Move Resolution 16 dash 28 approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Blacktop Service Company of Humboldt, Iowa, for the estimated cost of $136,038 for the 2016 by two-minute seal coat program, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
Angus.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resnick.
Resolution 16 dash 28 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number four is to approve contract on this year's pet ramp work. Motion, please.
I will move approval of Resolution 1629, approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa, for the citywide pedestrian ramp construction 2016 for an estimated cost of $89,240, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
Just a question, is, is there, this probably went for bid, and local contractors probably didn't win the bid, didn't win the bid, is that? I just, I didn't see the bid information here. What I'm asking, but.
Meetings ago that we had that information. Accepted the bid, and now it's just the contract for accepting that.
Okay, I'm just shop local, sorry about that.
Good comment. Yeah, Mike, Mike?
The contract is for $69,240. That, that needs to be correct.
From $89,240 to $69,240, is that what you're saying?
With administration of the program, there's an additional $20,000, but the contract with Feldman is for $69,0240.
Is there a motion to amend?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
So the amendment is on the floor, and we are still talking about the 16, now we're talking about $69,240, and the question that was asked by Councilman Resnick is whether this is the cheapest and, and it just outbid anybody more, more local, and Dyersville could be considered fairly, but that'd be correct.
Yeah, I mean, this notice went out to many, many contractors, and they evidently like working in Waverly, because this is probably the fourth contract they've had with the city.
Just a reminder, Mike, were the bids closed?
I, I don't have them in front of me, so.
Okay, thank you.
Midwest and Feldman were the two bidders on it, going back to our. March 21st agenda meeting, and Midwest Construction out of Piasta was 84.5 bid, and Feldman was $69,240.
Very good. I mean, it's good for the public to know, too. Thank you for that. Public input before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Resnick.
Resolution 16 dash 29 unanimously approved. Regular business item number five.
That's what I, right, was that for the amended or the original?
That's for the amended at $69,240, which was, which was, was on the floor, correct?
And we had to vote on the amended.
No, we already approved, we already approved the amended, because by voice, voice vote.
Yeah.
And then we're voting on the amended.
And I missed the voice vote, too, sorry.
Regular business, it was unanimous. Regular business item number five is to set unit price value for this year's sidewalk work. City Administrator, comments?
This is the seventh year of hopefully finalizing the sidewalk maintenance inspection. I know Engineer Cherry is doing a great job outlining the process, when the notices will go out, the next how many days, because I think this is the final year, is it not, Mike?
This is year six.
Is this year six?
2016, it's year six.
Oh, I thought we were going after July 1st, so I stand corrected, this is year six. But it's year seven, next year.
Mike set that up six years ago, so that it worked out very smoothly that way.
I'm off track completely, Mayor, so.
Yeah, that's all right.
I've got nothing else for you. It's not our first rodeo with doing this, so. I'm sure they've been following suit, everybody in the neighborhoods, they know it's coming, so.
Biggest thing with this is this just kind of sets the maximum prices, unit prices, that if they find a contractor that'll do it for less, obviously, homeowners can certainly go with that and.
This is that the city itself has to do it, right.
Is this an increase, decrease, same?
That I'm not sure, I don't have last year's numbers on it, Mike, you know offhand?
Well, we, we look at, you know, we don't want to be low, but we don't want to be excessively high either, so we pick, you know, we aim just a shade high, and in looking at where last year's unit prices came in, and where Feldman's bid prices came in for the pad ramp work, this is the same as last year, except for the grinding of uneven joints, that we increased that from, I believe, $10 to $15 per lineal foot due to where bid prices were coming in.
Thank you for watching over.
So Mike, just help me out, why would we not want to be low? You don't want to be low, you don't want to be high, why don't we want to be low?
Well, if, if we were to, to be below the market prices, then we're paying for work that the homeowner is responsible for, in addition to administering the cost.
Okay.
Now, when we do the final assessment, the final assessment is based off of bid pricing, and so they get the better value. Whichever one is the better value, that's what they will get.
Okay.
Basically allows them to go and find a contractor and say, the city can do it for this, can you do it for less?
My, my experience, I had a sidewalk done, and I couldn't do it myself for what the city would do for me, so. They did a great job and stuff, so. That was just mine, I don't want people egging my car away, but my, my experience, it was, it was done really, it was, it was done really well, and, and it was cheaper than I could have done it myself.
And I'm up this year, so I'm listening. Formal motion.
I'm over. Move Resolution 1630 approving the preliminary assessment unit price values for the 2016 sidewalk maintenance and inspection program.
Second.
Second.
Motion seconded, any further council discussion? Any public input? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Resolution 16 dash 30 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number six is a grant application to help fund the Parkway Bridge project. City Administrator, much hope here.
Not so much, probably, no, we're very optimistic and very hopeful. I know that it's released that Cedar Falls is also going after Tiger Grant, so we'll be in direct competition with that for their roundabout project, which, you know, you just don't know, and that's just two of them. You know, I've heard that, but it's, it's less than it was last time. I believe this is the, correct me again, before I go too far, was it the fourth time we've applied?
I believe it's third.
So next year will be the fourth time we're going to apply.
I was thinking it was the fifth.
It's that ambition, I can't help it, I'm always ahead of it. Next year will be the fourth time we'll apply. Thank you, third time we've applied, it's possible. It's, like I said, it's half of what we're asking for, so we're looking basically for a 50-50 match. I don't know, I can't remember the timing, though. Do you know when they're going to announce these, oh, Mike? We'll know, trying to find it.
I believe this is for the fiscal year, starting in October, so I would hope that it's quicker than last year's notification, and that we, well, let's see, it's due end of April, so we got May, June, July, August, so maybe in August. I mean, they get hundreds of these, and they have to go through them methodically, they have a team broken up into teams reviewing them.
Does it help, does the application change this year? Because we've got, we've got evidence now of what a little bit of that really would do for us in economic development. Does that help?
Well.
Can we pull through that application with?
Yeah, and last year, we were, I think, requesting, you know, 80% funding, and this year it's down to 50%. You really don't want to go much south of 50%, because if, if we do it 100% with local money, we can do it more economically than when there's federal dollars involved. As soon as there's federal dollars involved, they estimate the costs go up 10 to 15% because of the labor wage requirements we have to meet, as well as all the additional recording, documentation, and hoops that have to be jumped through.
I think our documents, James, say September is when they announce the approved projects.
That's our worst case, we would hope probably is at least no by the time the new fiscal starts federally, October 1st. Sooner it'd be even better.
So, James or Mike, typically how many Tiger Grants will be awarded in a given year?
I suppose some of it depends on the amount of money that is awarded, because you could have quite a few smaller ones, a couple larger ones, I don't know if they have an average of how many offhand they go, but.
I'm, well, I'm thinking 30 to 40.
Sounds about right.
But they, they had this, last year, they, you know, they have $500 million available, and they had funding requests that were in excess of $11 billion. So, I'm not holding my breath, but I know what the amount we'll get if we don't apply. That's a given, it'll be zero opportunity if you don't apply.
Well, given the energy of this effort in general for the Parkway, so this is a serious application, even if we are playing some tough odds here, but, okay, formal motion.
I move Resolution 1631 authorizing the city staff to proceed in applying for a fiscal year 2016 Tiger discretionary grant of $5,750,000 of federal funding to cover half the estimated $11,500,000 cost for the Cedar River Parkway project.
Second.
It was a second, I think, Eddie. Council discussion, more?
So if we don't get a grant, is there, is the project not feasible, or are there other ways to get it done?
I go to the city administrator on that one, I think.
Everything's possible, Mike. Sometimes it's just delayed in timing, I think the other option we've talked about, local option, sales tax money, if that comes in this fall, there's always an opportunity, it's just, it's how far out you have to go, timing, priorities. I hope to submit a list to the council soon of a list of about a dozen, 10 to 11, 12 projects that have been kind of tossed out there for the next three, five, seven years. Get that priority list and start working on how they could possibly be funded going forward. And this, of course, is one of the larger ones, the largest one on that list, but it's all possible, it's just a matter of time, how long it takes, does it have to be done in multiple years of bonding to get it done? Other grant possibilities, local option money, there's just sources, as many as we can use, we'll use, but if you want it to be done, it'll get done, so.
Very positive, thank you.
Yes, sir.
More council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Resnick. Waldstein.
Yes.
Resolution 16 dash 31 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number seven is a grant application for replaced insulation at the airport's bulk hangar facility. Let's go directly to a motion.
Move Resolution 1632 approving the Iowa Department of Transportation and General Aviation Vertical Infrastructure GAVI grant application for the bulk hangar insulation renovation project at the Waverly Municipal Airport for an estimated cost of $50,000.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resnick. Angus.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 16 dash 32 unanimously approved. Regular business item number eight is to, is to select a repair option for the damaged Fifth Avenue Northeast Box culvert. We've had one lengthy discussion on this already. City Administrator, what again are our options here, and this is for the public as well?
Well, no, Mike is spelled out, there's a couple options you're looking at. You know, it's, it's basically the full-blown culvert that you would normally do in a, in a situation like this, or it is a more of in a bridge-down version with the, I can never think of the term, like the side concrete railing, the.
Barrier rail.
Thank you, the barrier rail. So it would be, that would be the lesser of the two costs. I believe the estimate for the full culvert is about $190,175 plus the barrier rail. I'm trying to look at the notes I had. And yeah, it's just a brief update that I would have, I would definitely defer to Mike on this with the detail involved.
Anything to add to that? I mean, the council's been part of this, but I just want to make sure, as we're moving forward here, we got neighbors all around on this one, and whether we go single or double lane, and our trade-off on costs here are significantly different.
And I completely misstated that, Mayor, in the amount, it's my fault. The culvert itself would be $175,000, the barrier rail option would be 15, so I said clients to that, that was my mistake.
No, that's fine, okay.
You know, it seems inevitably that there's no black and white, only different shades of gray. So, um...
Good movie.
You know, I really hesitate to say it because someone was bound to say, "Oh, you mean Fifty Shades?", you know?
[laughing]
So, I wasn't gonna go there, but, you know, it, it's, you know, to, to, to go with barrier rail, it is very low cost and it can be done. But for how long is, is the question? How long is it gonna be like that? I think, you know, if it was a situation where we needed to improve the safety and keep it open to one lane for a few years, that might be the route to go. But when we're looking at this being long-term to, to, you know, take, um, you know, one of our township roads that's coming into town and narrow it down to, you know, we're gonna try to get a fourteen-foot wide lane, but more likely it may be closer to twelve feet. That's getting pretty narrow. That's, you know, barely able to get a snowplow through. That's what we're looking at.
That's what you get with the pre-cut, with the barrier rail.
With the barrier rail, yeah. And, and that's what they're using now on Bremer Avenue. If you wanna know what it's gonna look like, that, that's exactly what it looks like. They're about twelve-foot long sections, um, you know, they get lifted into place and then they have pinned connections on each side. And we'll do reflectors and stuff so they're visible at night to, to help guide vehicles through. But there's also an opportunity with contractors in town to change order into the Dry Run Creek project. And the estimated cost for that with, uh, engineering and, and project administration is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Maybe I didn't understand. So that, you said that everything on like Bremer Avenue, that they're just dropping in? That's, that's the barrier rail?
That's barrier rail. Yeah. Yep. It's thirty-two inches tall. It, it's kinda shaped wide at the bottom and narrows up at the top.
Yeah, okay.
And, and that's to channel the traffic through to keep them away. Cause you gotta remember, there's, there's like no shoulder and where the box is, it's, it's right from the edge of the pavement, it's a nine-foot drop down. And so if we're gonna be cheating people over away from the bad side, well, now we're concerned that they may end up dropping a wheel off on, on the good side. So we would put barrier rail on both sides.
So what the barrier rail does is narrow the traffic. It's not a fix, it's basically narrowing the traffic.
It's correct. Yes.
There is a, so the wood part, does that go across the whole section or is that just the end of it?
That's the end of it. Uh, uh, the, the wood extension is about seven feet.
So there'd still be some of that that's showing?
Well, the barrier rail would be on, on the concrete part. We would not be placing any of the barrier rail over the bad wood section. And, and the base of the barrier rail was two feet wide. So, um, you know, we've got the width of the concrete section of the box culvert is twenty feet wide. And then we're, we're, you eliminate at least two feet on each side with the barrier rail, cause, you know, we gotta bring in a little bit. So, you're, you're down to, we hope to be able to achieve a fourteen-foot lane going through.
People still be driving over the wood part?
No.
The wood part made it wider. Oh, so you're just covering that part up? Okay. Okay.
Yeah. The, they, they went through and they sized it, um, and they priced it as if it was changed ordered in and they priced it as if it was a standalone project where you develop a unique set of plans and specifications, go through the bidding process, and, and, and do just that one box culvert. And so the price difference is, uh, on the construction side went from about one seventy up to two hundred and thirty thousand. That's the opportunity cost of being able to change order into a project that already has contractors building box culverts.
Is there a weight restriction on this right now?
No.
Would there be going forward if you get on the same lane?
No.
So would you have like semi-traffic truck be able to go through that?
Yes.
But not anything else you wouldn't wanna get?
It, it would be, it'd be wide enough for, for a semi. It'd be wide enough for a school bus and a plow truck. That's, that's our goal and objective. Um, but this would be long-term. And, you know, concern is if you get a year into it and you, you don't like it, then you're, you've spent the fifteen thousand and now you're looking at potentially a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar expense. That's why it's not an easy decision. At, at least for me, I go back and forth depending on the day.
I guess the question I have is, if you look at what's there now, and I think it references here, it's basically a double wide and they're suggesting going triple-wide culvert.
It, it's actually a single wide. It's, it's like nineteen and a half feet by seven and a half feet tall. And that is basically the equivalent of allowing a ten-year storm event. So, um, on the summary statement, I kinda have it listed out that if you were to try to size it with something similar, it'd be a twin twelve by six, and that would only accommodate like a ten-year storm event. If you go with the triple twelve by six, now you're achieving a fifty-year storm event. And I'm comfortable with that because as land develops, they will have to manage the storm water and reduce those peak discharges. So, I'm very comfortable with a triple, um, twelve by six. If you wanna achieve a hundred-year capacity for, you know, that very localized rain, you'd need a quad. You'd need a quad twelve by six.
I guess where I was headed with my question is, do, do we have any information that suggests, um, that the current design capacity is causing any flooding issues for folks on either side of it? I, I know we hope that part of the community grows at some point, but I, I guess, walking a step farther in my question is if we would just replace it with a double-wide twelve by six, and then if it developed, could we add the third or the fourth at a later date? Or does that become a design issue?
You know, I guess I, I wouldn't really, you know, when you're making this type of investment, I, I think you need to be looking at the fifty-year design criteria, not a ten-year. Um, you run the risk of, of having a washout, having issues, and then if there is development, trying to add on, you know, complicates the, the design factor. Uh, I know the person who used to live next to it, and he said, "Yeah, they used to have issues with it coming down and, and just about overtopping the road." I don't know if it ever has overtopped the road, but his recollection in the years that he lived there is that, "Yeah, there's a lot of water that comes down through there."
Probably collects trash and stuff when it does that.
Uh, trash in the form of corn stalks and, and other, yeah. Especially because the wooden section was divided into four cells.
My question, I guess, is, that road is pretty much an unfinished road right now. Um, if and when that does develop, if we put the triple in now, would that need to be replaced if that road becomes paved? Or is that gonna be sufficient for that kind of a development that, that they would just be able to add to, to finish the road on either side and have those more?
The, the, the pricing that they have done builds it for that future roadway reconstruction. And the design criteria that was used was, uh, twelve-foot driving lanes and eight-foot shoulders. So, it, it would be able to accommodate, um, that type of roadway, which would be very sufficient.
So this would be an investment that would be able to hold in the future?
Yes.
As opposed to, you know, a fifteen, which would...
Yeah, this, this is looking at a seventy-five-year, um, structure.
Another question, funding would come from where?
There's, uh, funds in the Dry Run Creek project right now that would be reallocated to this, since you'd have a similar style culvert, same vendors. I'll let Mike go a little further with, that's where we're leaning on initially.
It, it, we've been running the numbers and it looks like with, uh, the revenues received from bond issues and, and the pricing that there may be in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over. But what you have to think about is that money can be reallocated to lots of different projects. It can be reallocated to Bremer Avenue, could be reallocated to the Cedar River Parkway, could be reallocated, I think, to even the Third Street Bridge.
So it is legal to take the Dry Run money and use it other places?
That would need to be reviewed and scrutinized, but they were general obligation bonds. So I think for any essential corporate pers, purpose, that could, could be done.
I think that's the, for me, that's the crux of the question. Um, I mean, there's clearly an opportunity value here, um, but how do you weigh that against, um, you know, spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on, on something else?
Yeah.
To back up Dave, we would have a conversation with bond council and make sure that's legitimate. We've done that quite a few times, reallocation. If it's similar in nature to what was, uh, described and you do the disclosure in your bonds, and a lot of times they're vague enough to allow for these kind of, uh, transitions if need be. Since it was a watershed project, it was Dry Run Creek, et cetera. This is a very similar style of box culvert, similar to what was done. It may just be another resolution by council to reallocate formally those funds from that. But, uh, that would be certainly something we would check and do before we ever completely formalize it.
My bigger concern with that is not just, not necessarily the bond funds, but necessarily the state funds that are coming in for the Dry Run project, that we don't do anything that jeopardizes that.
Yeah, no, they're completely separate. We would not touch state funding.
Well, just mean, but, but by using some of those bond monies on this, that the state funny money doesn't get jeopardized, that they come back and say, "Whoa, you're spending", I don't... Yeah, should've saved the state money or something. We were gonna match.
Cause, yeah. No, we're, this, this was additional revenue because we had very good interest rates on our bond issues.
At that time, you issued a lot of institutions were giving premiums, so to speak. They were giving you more money than you wanted to try and buy down their own raise for the coupons so they could resell them. And so a lot of bonds, I know Blackhawk, we had a half million, six hundred thousand dollar premium thrown at us in some objects we were doing. The city had a similar item. There were premiums being delivered above and beyond what you needed for the same rate. And so that's where some of the excess may have come from. And a lot of times it's, you know, ample money to get that. And so you'd be able to demonstrate that. The same thing we'd have to do with like arbitrage calculations. You have to demonstrate the bond usage to the penny to make sure it was done proportionally and adequately, uh, so that it wasn't done by gaining funds on it, you know, things that you can't typically do. And so you would, uh, vet at this, so to speak, that state project money went here, match was here, premium was here, this is how we spent it. So you can easily document that in paper. But again, bond council would be consulted with at all times to make sure this was correctly done going forward.
So, Edie, are you asking, are you suggesting that if there are surplus funds, you're wondering whether this is the best place to reallocate them to?
Well, I think that's the question. I, I think where I'm leaning at this point in our conversation at least is, is that while, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is nothing to sneeze at and could be used elsewhere, the projects that we've mentioned, you know, that, uh, are, are future-oriented projects and coming up some of them sooner and some, some later are all in the several millions dollars worth of projects. And so, given that, uh, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, perhaps, I guess where I'm leaning is that, uh, if you have a longer view of this project and it's a seventy-five-year kind of life span or anticipated lifespan and it addresses, um, flood or water, you know, water issues, that, that, that it might very well be the smart thing and longer view approach to take. And yes, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we can't use for Cedar River Parkway, or we can't use for the Green Bridge, or we can't use for something else. But again, those are going to be huge in terms of dollar amounts, uh, projects anyway, so that, um, finding an additional hundred and seventy-five thousand there for those, um, might be the smarter thing to do and use this here.
Might be good for growth too.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I would...
I kind of agree with that, that value option that we have right now. I would, I would move resolution sixteen thirty-three approving repair option two for the amount, estimated amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Fifth Avenue Northeast Box culvert.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion seconded. Further council discussion?
Again, just to make sure if this is passed, that we still are gonna go through the steps of validating that...
Absolutely.
And there would also...
Checking, do we need to do that before we actually move it or...
And I need to bring back a formal change order for the, for the Dry Run Creek project.
So if a change order doesn't come back, that's the signal that it wasn't approved type thing?
Yeah, okay. We'll keep you up to speed completely on any conversation we have regarding this and bond council.
I just wanted to make sure we had a way to bring that back into the conversation before we move forward and...
Absolutely.
Public input? Roll call vote please.
Angus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen dash thirty-three is unanimously approved. Regular business item number nine is the Bremer Avenue Reconstruction Agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. Uh, city administrator, this one is pretty exciting. Uh, what's the upshot of this agreement one more time for the public?
Exciting as much as it might be scary too, considering everything we're facing now. And again, Mike's gonna have a little bit of a prop for us to look at. A lot of this will be just the initial design of what you'll be seeing at the public meetings, I assume, uh, for next Monday and then the following meetings after. So it's kind of a precursor as to getting this agreement going, to get some of that spelled out on paper, what it could look like, what it might look like. And it kinda ties in the next two items as well. But I'll turn it over to Mike with his prop and a little bit of discussion on this.
And I wonder if I can ask a, maybe even a sillier question than my concrete question. It looks like this and the next two items are very related. Are they the same?
They're all part of that project, but different portions of it.
Okay. So we're not, so we're not looking at three million plus three million plus three million?
Nope.
Same dollar amount. Okay.
Gosh, you caught us. Yeah.
Tell you what.
Gonna get that extra six million for, you know?
Yeah.
But no, it is the same three million.
Okay, so I can, I can breathe through this?
Yes.
Through the props.
So we, we want the public to know that David Resnick just saved the city six million dollars.
Write that up.
I'm not sure.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Write that up that way.
Okay, moving along.
Well, the, the, the basic elements of the agreement are that, uh, you know, this is a state highway that goes through a community and goes through, you know, the heart of the community. And so, um, there are features of the roadway that are very different than what you would see in a rural section. So we have curb and gutter sections, we have parking lanes, we have storm sewer and those types of things. We have traffic signals. And so those are features that are unique to the community. And the DOT treats them that way, that they feel that they are responsible for the driving lanes and some of the storm are managed. But they are not, and they're responsible for some of these amenities that have been created along the corridor. Such as parking lanes. And, um, the turning traffic within the community off the side streets is what generates the need for traffic signals. So, uh, the agreement is, basically maps out that, uh, this is what they refer to as a pre-design agreement where the city is acknowledging that they're gonna be responsible for certain elements of the project. And, um, there will be another agreement once the design is finished.
That talks about the construction activity. So, um, as I said, things like the parking lanes, uh...
So, as I said, things like the parking lanes, a portion of the storm sewer, a portion of the mobilization and the design work is, are items that the city needs to cover in addition to any of the local utilities. So in this situation, we're suggesting that we replace. And add water main along the Bremer Avenue corridor. So they will incorporate the replacement of the city's water system into their construction documents.
Why don't you rehand your mute in the mic a little bit?
He caught me.
Nothing going through tonight.
I'm staying on the button.
Back to start over? So, so, you know, that, that's the gist of the agreement, and so that, that effort is, is estimated at about $2 million for parking lanes and storm sewer and those types of activities. The water main work is estimated about a million dollars, where we're looking at about two miles of water main replacement as part of this project. And they will incorporate that into the design, and it will be bid as part of the project, which resolves a lot of coordination issues.
Are there really water main pipes that are less than an inch? I read someplace in here, or less than an inch and a half.
They're four inch. Water services can be, a lot of, in older parts of town, they were maybe three-quarter inch galvanized.
This is huge.
I'm replacing garden hose.
Okay.
Some places.
Well.
Twelve inch main, is it, Mike, we're looking at?
Okay, the, the existing main for most of it is four inch. So this is the prop I brought along, and, you know, you're gonna look inside of this and go, holy cow, and it's like, yes, this is what the inside of a water main looks like, you get, you get deposits built up in there. So this is why we, we do a hydrant flushing program, and what we're actually doing is we're, we're intentionally increasing the velocity of the water in the pipes to help dislodge and pull some of that loose, loose material, some of the grit, some of the rust, the scale, you know, the hardness, because we have calcium carbonate in our water that leaves deposits. And over time, you, you'll see that you can lose the effective capacity of the initial pipe.
This is the old one, correct?
Yes, this is one that was removed from underneath the box culvert. We had to lower it down because the, the, the new box culvert was, was a little bit deeper, and, and so we wanted to make sure that we, we had our new main. We replaced, replaced with an eight inch main underneath, underneath the box culvert, so we're in good shape there. So we, we wrapped it, you know, our water main's not white, we wrapped it with paper towel, this for the benefit of the people watching, so you won't get your hands dirty.
We're looking at a twelve inch, is that right?
Well, what, what we're, you know, so we're kind of moving beyond this agenda item, moving into the water main replacement, which is the, the next item that you would be asked to, to act upon. So we, we have the four inch, given our businesses, provides adequate volume when it comes to just their daily operations. But where the four inch water main is insufficient is when it comes to fire protection, that we need larger pipe to allow the flow of water that can be used by our fire trucks. You know, the, the fire trucks connect directly to the fire hydrants, and then they're able to boost the pressure and, and get better distribution on their, on, on the firefighting on the water. So such as the downtown area, we have water main on the north side of Bremer Avenue. Typically, it's three-quarter or one-inch service lines that then have to go underneath Bremer Avenue to get to the businesses on the south side. For the upper story renovation, one inch cannot provide enough fire flow for the sprinklers inside the building. So they are going to install six-inch service lines underneath Bremer Avenue. So I don't know if six inches is a requirement, or six inches is just being safe. What we were hearing in the past is that they needed a four inch service line in order to get the flows, in order to meet the fire code on the sprinkled buildings.
But if they're doing six inch now, that's not going to affect anything with regard to this?
No, no. But in the downtown area, what, what we would look at doing is running water mains on both sides of the street, so that there would be no water services underneath the pavement. The water mains would probably be located underneath the parking lane, and then we would connect all the, all the services in at that point. So in the future, if there was a leak, or was a need to replace or enlarge a water service, we would not experience what we have today. So moving on to the third item is, if there are old water services, we should probably require those to be upgraded. So if they're substandard, if they're undersized, if they're galvanized, if they don't, you know, meet the material requirements and the sizing requirements that we have in place today, those should be required to be replaced and upgraded.
When you get to that piece, or does each building down there have their own curb stop? So we would bring it up to the curb stop, and then from the curb stop into the building is what you're suggesting we should also require?
Well, at the very least, everything from the main to the curb stop, including the curb stop, should be upgraded. The question is, do you, another question would be, do you mandate that they upgrade all the way into the building? So if it's a galvanized line, is it sufficient enough to mandate that they upgrade from the main to the shut-off, but then it remains galvanized into the building?
I guess that's what I thought this third piece was doing, was setting that requirement.
Well, I, I, I think from staff's point of view, it's definitely to the shut-off, but how do you physically get inside someone else's building to do the remaining part of it? So I, I think at the very least, we want to mandate from the main to the shut-off. The shut-off would be in the sidewalk area, so if there were any issues with leakage, it would hopefully only impact the sidewalk area and not the pavement.
Again, I would agree with that piece, as long as we've got it opened up, we, the city should extend to that curb, curb stop with new, but from there, I guess, looking for the rest of the council's feeling, do we force business owners, homeowners to upgrade from there, or do they have the option of rolling the dice and coming back at a later date and doing it if there's problems? I, it seems like with other projects where we have given that option, we do run into situations where you're reconnecting old to new, and within a short time, there are issues with it. I'm not saying that's every connection, but little hesitant to force an upgrade on a homeowner or a business owner, but maybe it can be approached more like what we're doing with the sidewalks, as long as we've got it open, it's going to be less expensive for you to do it now, and we'll partner cost share, any extra cost at whatever rate we're paying type thing versus.
Yeah, I think it would be something to communicate with those businesses and homeowners, that this is an opportunity to do it. They're not required to do it. I don't, I don't think we can require somebody to upgrade themselves, you know, it's, we're, we're taking care of the public aspect of, of the service. That private line into the business or into the homes, that's their decision, and could be like the downtown units when they want, wanted to. They need to get that done for the sprinklers, so they are doing it.
The most important thing is to, to get it out from underneath the new roadway, that if, if, if they refuse to do the last five feet into the building, you know, again, how do you go force that in a timely manner? And that's where I think it's like, you know what? We're gonna replace it, replace the shut-off, and then we're gonna connect back into what you got, and you're on your own.
It may be on their own timetable as far as when they want to renovate, when they want to upgrade itself.
Well, others may want to upgrade for fire protection, which may be a four or six-inch service line going into the building at that point.
This is a helpful discussion. Should we move to a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution sixteen thirty-four, approving the Iowa Department of Transportation pre-design agreement for the Iowa Highway Three Bremer Avenue reconstruction project.
Second, please. Motion seconded, further council discussion?
I wonder if we want, maybe as I read through this, there's quite a bit of stuff abbreviated legal, legal summary for us.
Talking about the.
Pat us on the back and say everything's gonna be okay. Go ahead.
The design agreement, the pre-design?
Yeah.
It's a pretty generalized document. I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't have the specific construction. It basically says we're gonna design it together, and, I mean, it's, they're gonna do it for us.
But in terms of that, I was wondering, too, I mean, is this an opportunity, or does it just not work that way with the Department of Transportation? Is it an opportunity to negotiate it all in terms of what they cover and what we cover?
I think that has to be where, maybe the final design of the project itself, to decide what, which is theirs and which is ours, and I think that's where the debates can happen.
I think it's spelled out in here. Future.
Yep.
So the, so the dollar amounts are probably more, maybe just a placeholder at this point?
Are, are two million and one million, yes? Yeah, they're just.
Depending on final design, that'll determine a lot of what is and isn't, the bump outs to the, and, and the other thing I want to make sure we quantify is too, is the city's looking at replacing the water main itself, but not necessarily covering from the main to the curb stop. That itself may be for the business as well, is that not correct, Mike? We discussed the possibility, but I don't think that we'd agree necessarily, or presenting it to the council, that we will as a city cover water main to curb stop yet as well. That may be something the business may have to take care of.
Yeah, we're not, not advocating any, I guess, discussion about that at this point. You know, is it something covered 100% by the city, or 100% by the homeowner or property owner, or somewhere in between, you know? But what we're saying is that if it's substandard, it needs to be replaced, at least up to and including the curb stop.
That was the part we'd like to at least mandate, is that piece for sure, so that if there are any breaks, it's not in the street itself, that's all been replaced new if necessary.
Are we talking something very expensive if we were trying to privatize that last little?
Well, and we don't have a really good feel at this point for that, and that's why we didn't feel it would be appropriate to start.
Okay.
Having that discussion now, there will certainly be opportunity, probably in about six months, to, you know, deal with that.
All right. Further council discussion?
Maybe just so, so tonight would be, we would basically kind of approve moving forward, and, you know, from a, you know, taking off my city council hat, put on my citizen hat, this is really something we gotta do, you know, the, the line.
DOT's coming, there's no, the DOT's coming, we legally have a portion we're gonna have to pay for.
This is an opportunity to make, you know, repairs that makes sense, otherwise it's gonna cost significantly more, so we gotta do it. But it would be, it'd be good to know what impact to the people there would be, if any. Maybe that's something that would have come anyway, so, I don't know, I guess everyone else weigh in on how we handle that, kind of to Chuck's comment. You know, if, if DOT is coming in, they're replacing Bremer Avenue like we've wanted for a long time, but it's gonna cost me as a homeowner, how many dollars? I don't want to throw out a dollar just to, for people panicking, but if it's gonna cost me something, it'd be good to know, so I can plan ahead for that.
Right.
Or maybe as a city, we can have, we can be creative in something to assist with that.
Right, and, and, you know, as soon as we can really kind of refine and start developing those numbers, we, we want to make them available. Again, we kind of want to be able to explain to, to these businesses and property owners, well, what does this mean? You know, that, that I, it's mandated that substandard services have to be replaced, and, and so we need to be able to map that out for them and, and address those. I can tell you, it's gonna be a fraction of the cost that they're spending right now, because you don't have the pavement removal costs, you don't have the traffic control costs, it's, you know, we're gonna get you, you know, we gotta get you hooked up to the new main anyway, so better yet, let's do it with a new service line.
Okay, further council discussion? Public input. John's sitting there quietly, not mulcied Meyer. All right, roll call vote.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen dash thirty-four is unanimously approved, regular business item number ten, let's go directly to a motion.
I'll move Resolution sixteen thirty-five approving the replacement of the water main in the Iowa Highway Three Bremer Avenue corridor for an estimated cost of $1 million.
Second, please.
Second.
More council discussions, the same item as David shown, pointed out.
Just, I guess, funding in this, again, this is, I just remembered somebody, holy cow, we, we're gonna be, we're gonna do the Green Bridge, you know, that dollar amount, then we do this for another dollar amount. I guess just to reiterate that these are estimates at this point, we need to come back, and James is doing all kinds of work on how we fund this and so forth, so that's all coming, just so people know that we're not just approving $3 million and going home tonight, there's a lot of work to be done.
There's a lot of funding options with this project, from possible geo-bonds to, I believe a chunk of this is TIF qualified, to water fees themselves, to local option money, there's a lot of different funding sources, they'll all be investigated, it's the most efficient way to do it going forward for each piece.
Before we can do that.
Thank you, David.
But again, this particular motion is for the one million for the water main, not the three million?
From four to eight inch.
Yep.
That's that, this is this motion.
Replacing that water main versus leaving the existing pipe sitting on the table there versus, yeah.
Thank you, Edie, exactly. Further discussion? Public input. Roll call vote.
Resnick? Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen dash thirty-five is unanimously approved, regular business item number eleven involves the sewer service line, which is basically the same discussion, formal motion.
I'd move Resolution sixteen thirty-six approving the replacement of substandard water service lines in the Highway Three, Iowa Highway Three Bremer Avenue corridor as part of the Iowa Department of Transportation Highway Three reconstruction project.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion?
Again, I, I think I understand where the discussion has landed tonight. If I were to read this without knowing tonight's discussion, I would think I, as a property owner, may be mandated to do something here. So I don't know if the resolution needs to have a qualifier in the therefore, something to the effect, does hereby approve the replacement of substandard water service lines to and including the curb stop, so that we're defining our obligation and we're not imposing our obligation on a property owner at this time.
But I think what I heard James say, it might even be the opposite of that, right? I mean, it might be that even up to the curb stop may not be entirely covered by the city.
That's correct, that'll all have to be kind of sorted out as we start getting numbers and amounts, it could be 100% the business owner, I don't know if the city as a council wanted to decide to cost share. as a council want to decide to cost share some of that. I mean, all of that will be in play. It's just we're trying to establish that if it's substandard, it will be replaced so that we don't have issues going forward instantly. Murphy's Law, you know, as soon as you finish that, there's going to be a break. There'll be jackhammering, brand new concrete right up for a small one inch line that should have been replaced. That's just the thing I do not want to see happen the month after this thing is open. So I think that's what Mike was establishing was we want to have the authority to mandate substandard service will be replaced one way or another. Maybe that's the way to put it, up to the curb stop.
And there's where you just added the qualifier that I want to make sure we all understand we're qualifying.
Yeah, I think the curb stop. Because I don't think it hurts to include that. Would you agree, Mike? I mean, you want to make sure that's noted, that that will be replaced as well if it's substandard.
I, I, I think that's the minimum amount of work that we want to do.
Absolutely.
The, you know, things that we're still working on, on how to deal with is what if the property owner wants it taken all the way into the building? How is, how is that addressed? Because every business could have a different situation. So how do you develop a construction contract to address those types of things? What if they want to enlarge it from up to a two inch or a four inch or six inch for fire protection? How do we deal with those? We, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we want to get there in the next four to six months. And there would be, you know, there would also be the need to put together an assessment schedule. So this is not the last time the city council will see this. But this gives us enough, you know, this gives us the authority to now send a letter out saying what the project's scope is going to entail. We may not have every, you know, answers to every question that come up, but those are things that we need to address going forward.
I think you've helped answer my hesitation, I guess. To me, yes, if, if somebody wants to go past what the minimum is, I think they should be responsible for that additional cost. I, I just want to make sure we're not sending the message to property owners that part of this, from the curb stop to your building, you're going to have to upgrade it from your galvanized to a four inch or something like that. If they choose not to, great. We'll certainly encourage them to look at their future needs, those type of things. And as you just explained, there may be some cost sharing that has to go into that. But, you know, I think it's our responsibility to put a service line to the curb stop at whatever the standard is. And then if we go beyond that, cost shared or assess for it or something.
Well, I, I would suggest not locking yourself into that position today, that they would pay nothing because we don't know what the cost is. I, I think before you take a position, you should have some idea of what the cost is for a typical business or property owner adjacent to it.
I think if I'm understanding it correctly, what staff is recommending here is that minimally, we pass something that says that replacements must occur, I mean, are mandated up to the curb stop because that's a minimum, just from a repair perspective, that needs to happen to deal with anything most effectively and efficiently. But how that will be paid for has yet to be worked out too, not just from the curb stop to the business, but also up to the curb stop, right? You're not saying anything about payment, who's paying for what here? And that's the discussion you're asking us to have later when you have more information. But this is a resolution that would just mandate that substandard things would have to be replaced, up to the curb stop. Well, up to the curb stop.
Yes.
I guess maybe I have a misunderstanding on who owns what. I always thought the water system to the curb stop was owned by the city. So have we ever...
No, it's, it's to the main.
To the main.
In Waverly, it's to the main, both water service and sewer service is to the main.
So in the new housing developments we're doing now, the contractor is responsible from the main to the curb stop to the house?
Right, because it gets it out from underneath the pavement.
Okay. Then I misunderstood how the current arrangement was. So yes, it makes sense that there may be some cost sharing in that process.
Thank you. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resnitchek.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 16 dash 36 is unanimously approved. We have some reports from boards and commissions. First, we have the law board minutes from March 14th. Any comments on them officially received? We have the law, law board minutes from April 11th. Official, any, any comments? Officially received. We have the senior calendar, which we appreciate, and they do so much. And we're always applauding their efforts. This is for April. We all have those comments officially received. Staff comments?
I don't have any, air unless staff themselves have anything additional to that.
Thank you. City council comments? Edie or David?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Just the big one next week is the public hearing with the, with the DOT for people here at the Civic Center at 5, 5:00, 7:00, right?
Yes.
Before the council meeting?
Yes, and...
Or for study session, part of the study session as well.
I, well, they're very different. I strongly encourage council members to attend the open house, either at 5:00 or 6:00. We're going to give like a 15 to 20 minute presentation, general overview of the project. And now we can certainly talk about the water main and talk about the service lines as part of that. The intent then is to, we'll, we'll do that at 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. But after we give the presentation, our intent is to direct the attendees to go to one of four different areas that will focus in on that section of the project. So, you know, we don't want to be, you know, taking up people's time. If all you're interested in is how do I get to Waverly Childcare? How does that impact that section of the project? You don't want to have to listen to concerns of the businesses on the east side of town necessarily. So we want to divide up into the four different project sections. So that will occur at 5:00 and then again at 6:00. We want to give those opportunities. At 7:00 with the city councils, to give that same 15 to 20 minute presentation and then give you kind of an update or summary of, you know, the, the concerns and fears or the opportunities and ideas that were presented during those open houses.
Thank you, Tim.
And this will be in the paper so that people know that it's coming?
We got John Molsied from the Courier here as well, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that's included in the report when I'm talking about what you guys were just talking about with Highway 3.
I want to make sure we get as many people here as possible because it's...
That, that page or two that you...
We've been calling for it for a long time.
Yes. But the page or two that Courier has for Waverly, every paper is really appreciated. It's all in there. You can push some of this. This is important stuff. So thank you for being here, John. Mike?
I, yeah.
A little humor in there also, John.
I, I had a conversation with a resident at Eisenhower Village last week, and the question was put to me, is it true or is it not true that a rebuild of 20th Street out to Eisenhower Village is in the pipeline somewhere down the road? Or should we expect to see it in our lifetime? Now, I realize some people at Eisenhower don't think their lifetime is as long as other people's. But I, I just said, I will bring it to council or raise the question. And my, my uninformed opinion was, yes, I think it's in the, in the grand plan of things, but I can't tell you when it would come up.
And that'd be part, this is really our C administrator all the way here.
You are correct on all accounts that you just mentioned. I also cannot tell you when it will come up, but it is in the grand scheme of things.
So it's on the board somewhere.
It is. It's on the whiteboard. It's with the other 10 or 11 that you'll get a chance to rank is where you think the priority lies. And in all seriousness, I'd say in the next three to five years, we're going to try and have all this accomplished if possible. But, but yeah, it's, it's on the board. We're well aware. It's just fitting it into everything else based on the priorities that the council will set. So what do you think should go first?
Well, you're saying three to five years is actually encouraged, encouragement to some people, I think, because they are thinking more like 20 years. I think that's pushing it really far out.
That's really pushing it out there in 20 years. So, yeah.
Mr. Dan?
Just a follow-up question from our meeting two weeks ago. If I understand it correctly, now that we've did not vote to continue any type of franchise fee for the cable, that that income will stop May 7th of 2017? Was it a 10-year? It would be true because that's the current chapter, which is that agreement, which terminates on May 7th. So that basically almost runs through the budget that we just approved. So we don't need to go back and make any type of amendment due to the lost income.
Shouldn't have to, no.
Just have to keep it in mind when we budget this fall. We either need to renew that or figure out another way to pay for the broadcasting, those type of things. Okay.
Yes, council person, James Perry. Any comments that you have, having sat through all this?
Not so far, no.
Yeah, it's just good to have you here and listening and digesting. One mayoral comment, I thanked council people individually, but during the passing of my mother and the burial on Saturday, Waverly is just an outstanding supportive community. I appreciate the council, especially, I'll never feel the same. Council, beautiful expressions came our way. I want to acknowledge that publicly. But how we all support each other, not just with passing of my mother, but how we are all one community and bonded. And I think it's just a privilege to be able to say these words and give thanks to all. Motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Adjourned.